All right, everybody. Welcome to the 2024 Candidates Forum, presented to you by the Sandy area, what, Chamber of Commerce? All right. Thank you for being out here and being, showing that you care. And thank you all the candidates. Everybody showed up, and that is fantastic. So tonight, just so you all introduce who our candidates are. Position number three, Richard Sheldon, current councillor. I'm running unopposed, I might add. Thanks for being here anyway. All right, position four, we have Erin Ferguson and Christina Ramsier. Did I pronounce that right, Christine? Oh, thank you. All right. Okay. Position six, Don Hokerson, current councillor, and Shauna Lundry. Very good. And for the mayoral position, which is now going to be open, and that is Kathleen Walker, current councillor, and Lori Smallwood, council president. So thank you all for being here tonight. Before we go any further, I want to bring up Lacey Renard from the chamber. Say a few words.
I'm not as tall. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Well, as hopefully a lot of you know, when you're putting on an event like this, it takes a lot of people. And so a lot of efforts and generosity of our community brought this together. So I want to thank our committee. Dominic Delander, who's doing our wifi taping tonight and our livestream. And I want to thank Jillie Fanton. She's not here tonight, but she was also our committee member who did a lot of, a lot of things for our committee in this event. And I want to thank Skylar Silverlee over there, who set up our microphones and got all that sound system set up for us. Shannon Givens with the chamber, who has done a lot of the work you see online for us. I want to thank DJ Anderson for being our fabulous moderator. So we couldn't do it without you. We paid Dominic to make sure you were here. Thanks to Clockamas County Bank for letting us use this great room. Mountain Mocha supplied coffee and treats for us. And again, I want to thank the community for coming out. I want to thank the candidates for being here. And I want to say just a quick thing about the questions. If you saw when you came in, the little blue cards to fill out, if you have questions, if you have them during the course of the evening, just fill it out. And we'll collect those when we're done with the final or the first round of questions. And then we will ask those as many as we can within the time that we have. So some may not all get asked, but and we want to make sure that they are definitely city council relevant. So we just ask that you keep that in mind as you're putting those out there. So. Anyway, thank you, everybody, for being here. Like DJ said, it really shows how much you care for the community. So thank you. Yes, I'm.
Thank you, Lacey. A lot of work went into this. So hey, big hand for everybody to put it together. Thank you. Okay, we're going to end up starting with opening statements, but before we do that, I want to talk about the rules. This is a forum. This is not a debate. We're not going to argue. We're not going to play national TV games that you see going on. I'm tired of them. So really, it's just being held in the highest decorum. We're going to keep this as unbiased as possible. And it's an asking the audience to also keep quiet. So people who are watching online and other people in there can learn from these candidates. We're here to learn the information they have, their positions as councillors or when they get on, if they win. And so you can make an educated vote on November 5th. So please, let's hold this meeting at the highest decorum. All right? With that, we're going to start with two minutes of opening statements. We're going to start on this end from the left with Richard, and then each time I'm going to move that mic over. So you'll get this first question. So it's fair. Everybody has an equal opportunity. So Richard, would you like to start? We good? Can you hear?
No. There we go. All right. Well, thank you. And I also want to echo what I've heard a lot of today. Thank you for being here. Quite honestly, this is what I wish a lot of our council meetings look like. And I think you'll hear that theme from me tonight. So the why did you run for city council? So I think I need to go back to the first time I ran for city council, and that was, I lived in a neighborhood where they were building a development behind us. And because the simply put, because the city didn't have clear and objective code at the time, the neighborhood was going to be built with 100 homes using a street that was already over capacity for the only access. Long story short, thanks to Kathleen and other neighbors, we did get that other street built. It's now the Gunderson Road. It's off of 212 over there, 211, I'm sorry. But with that, there's still a cost to the city. And so I think there was a lot of improvement that needed to be made. So with that being said, my, the first set of priorities I have, and they carry over to this because this process is a long process, but was to get a clear and objective code audit. And so we've done that, and I believe we're going through our code at the moment. And we're getting it to where the code is up where it needs to be so that the city can grow in a responsible manner. Second of all, the there's, after I got involved, I learned of all the challenges that the city has. And I think you'll hear a theme from probably across all of us, and some of you may already be aware of it. But Sandy, thank you. Sandy has a, an infrastructure challenge. And so the next step is how do we, how do we manage and pay for that infrastructure? And so since I'm down to my 30 seconds, I think I'll save that for some later statements in the way and pass it on. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. In case you're wondering down here in front, there's a red and yellow card. This is not a soccer game. The yellow card means 30 seconds, 10 seconds when they hit the red. All right. Sorry. All right, Erin. Thank you.
My name's Erin Ferguson. I grew up right here in Sandy, and I really love this community. I've been involved in the community through volunteering through with Meals on Wheels and coaching kids sports and serving on the board of directors for the Council Community Club, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Economic Development Advisory Board with the city. I decided to run for council because I think that the council could use some fresh perspectives and needs to represent a broader range of citizens. I feel that as a spouse, a mother of four aged kids, a working parent and a business owner, I can bring useful insight to the council and be a voice for a lot of our residents. My family has a locally owned business that primarily builds rental properties. We are not a large developer. We're a small business who averages constructing one or two duplexes every year or so. When our business saw our building permit cost double in a two-year span, I was motivated to get more involved because that just seems really unreasonable to double in two years. And that makes building really unaffordable. And and then that triggles down through our residents. My priorities would be first, just putting the community first. I just want to listen to people, understand what they want and what they need and be an advocate. Second would be ensuring that the fees are reasonable. I want to set the record straight that I have never said I want to reduce fees. I just want to make sure that, well, because I realize that we need to increase fees for water and wastewater because we have, we, we don't have the infrastructure for our demand. But I do think there needs to balance, be a balance of covering the cost of that infrastructure, but also ensuring that people are still able to build in the city and provide housing for our residents. And then thirdly, just working on solutions for affordable housing by instead of taking an adversarial approach, collaborating with businesses, builders and developers.
Thank you, Erin. Thank you. Christina.
Hello. Pass me closer. Okay. I'm usually pretty loud. I'm wasting my time. Hi, I'm Christina. A longtime community member. I see a lot of familiar faces and a lot of new ones. I'm running for Sandy City Council, and I would like your support, your ideas and your vote. A little bit of history, I purchased my home in May of 1995 and have watched many positive changes and growth in Sandy. In those 29 years, Sandy has grown and offered so many great local businesses and activities. There have been many exciting additions to our city. Being a longtime resident, I have been excited to welcome those changes. Fred Meyer moved into Sandy, Reuben Lane was constructed, and more recently, the Hamilton Ridge neighborhood was built. With Sandy being such a great place to call home, it's no wonder people are looking to join our resident-friendly, feels-like-home community. With the construction of the new Sandy Place Apartments complex, I began to notice a consistent and sometimes intrusive increase in traffic on my once quiet residential street. Along with the traffic came an increase in noise and property disturbance that had not been noticed previously. The apartments had a noticeable impact on all days and during all hours. These apartments had a big impact neighborhood, more so than any previous building. Near the end of 2022, saw an article in the city of Sandy website asking for applications for vacant seats on the planning commission. With the rapid development around Sandy, I felt like now would be a great opportunity to get involved. I applied and interviewed with no previous experience, but I did my research into issues facing not only our city, but how our state of Oregon governs and guides density and development. My desire to learn how to contribute and represent a path forward would benefit residents and inevitable and responsibility and responsible expansion was my only motivation. My goal was.
There we go. Thank you. We do have to keep it on time. Thank you very much. Don?
Hey, I'm Don Hokenson, our first term city council. And like Rich, I need to go back to why I ran for the first time to get involved. It was twofold. One is I hit a point in time in my life where I could give back to the community. Prior to that, I was raising kids. And I had a special needs daughter live in a home, things like that. So there wasn't a lot of extra time, but with an empty house, there was time. And I saw a Facebook post and Kathleen Walker had put that out there and said there was a need and and I messaged her and said, you should run. And she stroked my ego just enough that I did. And it's been a whirlwind ever since. A lot of learning. I mean, because my political experience prior to that was pretty limited. I was involved in, you know, getting the new school built and some budget committee things, but I'm kind of from the outside looking in. So for me, it was a lot of learning and but within the year or two, I felt like I got to my stride and I feel like I've been able to contribute in some very positive ways. We have some really big problems that we have to face. There's things that we haven't ever had to face in terms of the size, in terms of our wastewater and drinking water, some of it because we didn't address things properly years ago, resulting in some of these enormous jumps in rates that you've already heard about. But it's things that we have to do. We have to continue to prioritize the long term, not take those short-term, easy political win. If, which was kind of the pattern we've been in. So for me, coming back, it's continuation and continuing to set the, right the ship. That's really what this is about. Get our fees, our SDCs, our charges, everything in place for a solid future.
Thank you, Don. Shauna?
Hello, my name is Shauna Lundry, and I'm running for seat number six. First and foremost, I want to thank everyone for their attendance here tonight. It means a lot to me to see everybody out here and so interested in how this election process is going to take place. A little about me, I am a wife, a military mom, a nana to four beautiful grandbabies, retired police officer, a small business owner, and I have served 10 decades, or excuse me, 22 decades. Hello, two decades.
You don't look.
As a public servant in local and state government. I'm a volunteer in city departments, nonprofits, community organizations, such as the Sandy Police Department, Ant Farm, Kiwanis, Sandy Mountain Festival, and Sandy Area Softball, just to name a few. As a small business owner here in Sandy, I'm also a member of the Sandy Area Chamber of Commerce. My inspiration to run for city council was due to the lack of transparency in decision-making and experiencing massive rate increases being voted in by the council members. I didn't feel like there was much input from local business owners or the residents. I recognized there was a drastic need for change within our city government. Consideration needs to be taken to invest in staffing and maintaining the infrastructure we already have. As your city council member, I will be involved with getting back to the basics, investing in adequately staffing our city departments to allow for better service to our community and to find ways to reduce spending. If we cannot afford it, we shouldn't be spending it. It's your money. I will listen to our city residents and support them while building public and private relationships and to accomplish their collective goals. I will focus on ensuring professionalism, respect, and respect return to our local government.
Thank you, Shauna. Kathleen?
Hi, everybody. I'm, I want to thank the chamber for hosting this and all you friends, neighbors and family who came out to see us be nervous. A shout out to all the candidates up here tonight because it's not for the faint of heart. And even though we may defer, we all love Sandy. I've lived in Sandy for 38 years. I worked for the Mount Hood National Forest for most of that in recreation. I raised, we raised two daughters, wonderful, awesome daughters, and were both active in community organizations. I have a history of frequently testifying for about the last 25 years before I got on council at council and planning commission meetings about city issues. I ran in 2020 because I was finding that the requirements for roads and parks and things like that were becoming what seemed to be optional when they had been required before. Nearby neighbors were clueless about developments until the dirt started moving and decisions were already made and they were upset about it. I was really glad to see Dawn and Rich win with me in 2020 to start changing the development-friendly policies to more residential friendly. But we are three votes out of seven, and we have not oftentimes had a majority. So we made some progress, but not enough in my opinion. So I'm running for mayor to hopefully get maybe four positions on council that do agree with our more residential friendly goals for Sandy. The priorities I would bring with me to the council or mayor's position, you know, a lot of those I'll talk in question one. But these are kind of more personal goals. And that is my, I love chatting with residents about their issues. They may know nothing about our sewer treatment plant, but they've got, they want a more accessible playground. They've got potholes, sidewalks, you know, things. They want speed bumps full of traffic, stop signs in their neighborhood. And it's so much easier and cheaper to fix those issues, but it makes such a big difference. So I'd like to solve these, help solve these small issues. I want to ensure my words and actions represent my belief and that all voices matter. Is it done?
Are we there? Yep.
All right.
Sorry. Not trying to be mean. Okay. Lori, thank you, Kathleen.
I've got two microphones, so you're in trouble.
I've got this switch.
You've got the switch. Pam, if you'll just yell at me because I won't. Yep, just say, hey, got it. So. So I'm Lori Smallwood, and I'm going to take a little different spin of why I'm, why I'm running. So I've lived in Sandy since the midnight or eighties. At that time, there were about 3,500 people here. You could still walk into the grocery store and know just about everyone. And it was really a great community. In my adulthood, I've worked for the school district, the fire service, and for the past six years, I've thrown down city council. I've met a lot of people in this community. And so it really bothered me this year when people started reaching out and telling me that they felt like city council wasn't listening to them and that they were intimidated when they came to specific meetings. Your elected officials should never make you feel that way. We are your neighbors and we are citizens who live for just the same as you do. You should always feel comfortable coming and speaking before something. Sandy has always been a tight community. When neighbor helps, helps neighbor. And you run into four or five people you know at Fred Meyer on a Sunday afternoon, and it's one of the things that I absolutely love. Where generations of family have called home, several of which have main streets throughout town that are named after them. So we're all real city in this room. To me, Sandy is community, it's family, and it's the sense of community and several people asking me over the last couple of years that led me to my, to my decision to run for mayor. So I think I stayed within my two-minute time limit.
Very good. Can you pass that microphone down to Erin? Because she'll be up first next. All right. So for the audience, there were five questions given to each member up here, candidate, prior to this meeting. So they could think about them and develop their answers. I had those questions written down here, but somebody at the podium when I walked in and I must decide that I really can't see because they wrote them in two-inch block letters, you know, but. So we're going to start, we're going to move down one space here, and we're going to start with Erin. And the first question is, in your opinion, what are the three most important issues facing our city? And what are your ideas for addressing them? Two minutes. That's a tough.
Okay, the first thing is our infrastructure. I think everyone sitting at the table and in the audience can probably agree with that because our, since the wastewater and water infrastructure was really neglected to support the growth we've experienced, we need to catch up with that. Moratorium on development has forced a slowing in this, so it's given us some time to work on building and upgrading these systems. And I think that we need to find some alternative sources of revenue because with the moratorium, we aren't collecting as many of those SDC fees that we may have been otherwise. Secondly, economic development. I think we really need to support and promote businesses in our town. Thriving businesses in our community is better for everybody. Our residents really want more options for dining, retail and services. And we can work to offer incentives to businesses to help fill our vacant commercial spaces and attract new businesses. And then thirdly, affordable housing and development fees. So currently, our SDC package is $32,000 for a single-family home. Every single family home pays these fees, of which $12,000 is parks. And then on top of this, you pay a $16,000 fee in lieu of land dedication. So you're paying $28,000 that goes towards parks on a single-family residence. The park fee is scheduled to increase to 25 grand per resident, residents in 2032. That's a 572 increase in a 10-year period. So if we level out parks, wastewater, water and transportation, you're talking, you're going to be paying over $100,000 in fees in 2032. That is just unreasonable and unaffordable.
Thank you, Erin. All right, Christina.
Well, since I talk too slow, I'm going to talk faster and I'm going to get right to the point. Sandy's current rate of system development charges are outdated. Past and current SDCs are far below the amount that is needed to cover the cost of infrastructure and growth in our communities. This gap in fees has been reflected in our utility bills, including water and sewer system. Projects have been delayed due to this financial gap. Some road maintenance projects have been shuffled to the back of the line. While Sandy struggles with the lack of infrastructure support as a result of SDCs that are outdated. This creates a deficit for needed infrastructure for all of us. We must bring the SDC fees up to a fair rate to support responsible growth, expand our community and funding infrastructure projects which will benefit all of us. You and I are paying a large increase each month in our water and utility bills because of these fees. Affordable housing is a phrase used several times to appeal for less or reduced system development charges for developers. Affordable housing is a two-way street. When developers are not paying up-to-date and appropriate fees for supporting infrastructure for all of us, that cost is passed on to you and I. At some point, that could create a scenario where our housing becomes unaffordable. That hardly seems fair. The city has many challenges with the moratorium restrictions imposed by the DEQ in late 2022, which basically halted new sewer hookups that were not previously approved. This upgrade to our water and sewer systems are needed to support our current residents, but also future expansion requires these very expensive updates to provide sustainable and dependable service for long-term solutions. Sandy would benefit from looking to the state for federal and government help funding this very expensive requirement. Sandy grows, so does our need for community safety. And supporting and funding our law enforcement services, the new police chief seems to be making changes and enforcing increased traffic presence, even though our department is understaffed.
Thank you. Very good. Don?
Three most important issues. Obviously, infrastructure continues. You know, you're going to hear that theme over and over. One of the things I do want to say is that I'm kind of unique on the council in that I've spent several years of my last career focusing on improving asset management strategies in utility companies, of which basically wastewater and freshwater are utility company. And so I've been able to assess and understand early on what, what we needed to do, how we needed to fix it. And I've also been involved in the oversight of those efforts as we've been going on. Lots of wonderful improvements been made. But when you talk about the, the risk right now and the priority, we don't have an affordable plan for our wastewater system. We have patched things. We have put things together. We are currently scraping by in a compliance, but it won't allow for growth. And the plans we have are not affordable. So we have to go back and continue to work with our consultants and come up with more effective, cost-effective plans because funding is part of it, but knowing what you're buying and buying the right thing is keyfully important. You've heard about SDCs. I've been a big advocate of SDCs because the beautiful thing is it's just math. If you don't like how much an SDC costs, what we have to do is go back to the things that were in it, in the facility plan, the parks and rec plans. If you want those things, you just follow through the math and that's where the numbers come from. And so that's what I've been advocating for when we say right-size it. If you don't, you just shift the burden on to the residents, and that's what we can't do anymore. So there you go.
Thank you, Don. Shauna?
In my opinion, the three most important issues facing our city are reasonable and responsible system development charges, increasing public safety and funding a community aquatic center without overburdening our Sandy residents. I have heard from some council members that higher SDCs will force developers to pay their fair share. Nothing could be further from the truth. Having some of the highest SDCs in the region creates a situation where there is no affordable housing. Developers who choose to pay these fees just pass these fees on to the homebuyers. I will look at reasonable and responsible fees while also advocating for developers who wish to provide affordable housing for our hardworking residents. As one of the fastest-growing cities in Oregon, year after year, our city has not kept up with staffing needs in any of our departments. Sandy's traffic problems are constant, and our hardworking police officers need to be supported. We can do this by increasing the number of police officers, and I would advocate the more full-time positions. The loss of our pool was a significant blow to our community, not just within the city limits, but with, within the surrounding areas as well. I will explore public and private partnership options and grant opportunities without raising the taxes. My approach is to bring a larger community center with some aquatic component, allowing us to have services locally without the need to go to Portland or Gresham. My experience working with different stakeholders involves volunteering in our community in many different ways. I have built relationships with these residents, businesses and organizations, and I would continue to engage in conversations with them to speak up for their concerns and their needs. I am always welcome to sitting down over a cup of coffee. I'm always going to listen to the stakeholders of our community at council meetings and ask questions for clarification if needed. The job of the city council is to be a voice for their, their community, not solely for their thoughts.
Thanks, Shauna. I'm sorry you couldn't get it all in there. That two minutes is a short period of time for a question like that. Thank you. Kathleen?
I'm going to start, right?
Speed, speed, speed.
I, my three major issues are infrastructure needs for growth, who and how we pay for it. And third is community safety. I'll mostly cover community safety in another question. So the answer is to increase, to the infrastructure needs is increased SDCs and state and federal grants to reduce our utility bills. SDCs, as you know, system development charges are the one-time-only fee that are charged to developers for every residential or business, business unit constructed. The reality is, is that SDCs for past developments were too low and not covering the true cost of their share of expanding infrastructure for water, sewer, roads and parks. Parks were from 1997. So when we hear about comparisons today, that the comparison is 20, from 25 years ago. I got, the result was that existing residents ended up subsidizing the city's growth with increased utility bills and delayed projects like road maintenance and park development. The other part of the solution for who and how to pay for it is more grant-funded. We, DEQ imposed a moratorium on Sandy, but allowed 540 additional homes to be that were already approved to be built. They mandated that we move our wastewater treatment plant to Tickle Creek and Isley, that from Tickle Creek and Isley Nursery to the Sandy River, requiring a five-mile construction of a pipeline or moving it to Gresham, which is even further. So it's way too. So, um, it's way too expensive, the cost estimates, recent cost estimates. We've gotten a hundred and twenty million dollars in long-term loans, but even increasing SDCs and increasing utility bills aren't going to cover that cost. So we must find, uh, solutions with grant funding to pay for that.
Kathleen, thank you. Hold on just a second, Lori. Yeah, sorry to interrupt. Uh, seems we're having a problem up there, a technical problem with our, um, our live stream. The wifi here in this room is being overloaded, so if any of you are connected to the wifi here, could you please disconnect? You bet. Dominic's our tech guy, and, uh, hopefully that'll fix that so the people at home can watch. All right, Lori. Thank you. You bet.
Okay. All right, so my three, uh, most important issues, you guys are going to get tired of hearing about SDCs and infrastructure, but, uh, number one for me is infrastructure, two, affordable housing, three, economic development. And I'll talk about the last one in a later question. Um, as, as already been discussed tonight, and I think everybody in this room is well aware, our infrastructure has long been neglected, the cost of upgrades and expansions are unbelievably high. We need a combination of system development charges, which can only be used to fund new capacity, not existing capacity, leveraging funds from the state and federal government, grants, as well as creative out-of-the-box thinking to solve our infrastructure problem. No one answer is going to do it all. To manage growth effectively, Sandy's SDCs must be managed, high enough to help fund infrastructure, like our wastewater and water, but not so high that they discover, discourage development, which provides money for the SDCs in the first place. If an SDC is too high, development stops, which while it might sound good to some people, without moderate growth, there is no money from SDCs at all, nor are there additional ratepayers in the system, leaving all of the current residents to foot the bill. High SDCs make affordable housing impossible. By adding to the already high prices of our current housing market, high SDCs have the potential to add anywhere from fifty to a hundred thousand dollars to the price of every new home. That gets visited on to your children when they want to buy houses, uh, current residents when you want to upgrade houses. If your rent and mortgage is more than thirty percent of your gross household income, it's not considered affordable. The average rent in Sandy right now requires a household income over a hundred thousand dollars. That is not affordable, to pay for a rent of eighteen hundred to twenty-two hundred dollars a month. This is ridiculous. As housing prices increase faster than income like they are today, people struggle finding and maintaining houses, which contributes to homelessness.
Thank you, Kathy. Pass that down to Richard here. He'll have the, the last shot on this question. And by the way, am I getting paid for this if I'm going to buy a house? Oh, no.
All right, uh, you've heard a lot about the issues, and I'm going to stick with that as well, infrastructure SDCs. Uh, with that being said, um, I think it's important to go ahead and say a couple things that I heard up here and to advantage them to their lives. Uh, in, in response to being moved, moved only if you don't. So in our larger development, they can dedicate parkland, which, which suffices that being moved. So that is, that is a cost, uh, that, that gets, not necessarily an accurate thing and shouldn't be included in the SDC. With that being said, though, I would, I would like to say the infrastructure has to be built, and it has to be built because of growth. We're currently okay right now. If we were to stop our growth, our, our infrastructure and the sewer treatment plant, which is our big cost, would probably be okay. We could limp it along. The reality of it is, we are having to add capacity. That capacity comes from growth, and that growth, and, and so we have to ask, who's going to pay for that? So the reality of it is, these numbers are, are huge, and it's going to come from one or two spots. And I agree with everybody up here. We need to leverage money. We need to, we, we're going to, I'm going to push really hard to ask for the community to help, really help us get involved and start asking our, our state and local representatives to take some money to us. We need that help. We have to have that help, or, or Sandy will not be livable. And I, and I'm not trying to sound like a fear monger, but it's the reality of the game. But if, if we don't get these SDCs, then the cost gets pushed on to us that live here, self-included. And so if we want to talk about astronomical rates for wastewater and water, that's going to destroy our housing program as well, and it's going to make, it's just going to cause another unaffordable issue. The reality of it is, a house is going to sell for market value. It's going to sell at what the person is willing to pay. That is what the developer is going to sell that cost. They're going to have to make a business decision with our SDCs. We can adjust them later, but this is our one chance at that apple.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you very much. All right, that concludes that round. First question, Christina, you will be on the mic. Oh, you're already way ahead of me. Very, yeah. Okay, question number two. Explain your understanding of the role of the council in promoting economic development. Would you consider the current council and its actions to be business-friendly?
The city council's role is to promote policies and programs that benefit commercial areas and local businesses. The city funds the economic development department to help local businesses. The city has eliminated parking requirements for new businesses in the downtown area. They have constructed public parking lots and recently purchased a new parking lot downtown for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and converted it for public use. The city has numerous local business incentives, grants and programs for economic development, including the Covered Structure Program Grant that funded about one million dollars for over ten outdoor dining structures. The Facade Program Grant that helps existing and new businesses meet Sandy-style standards. The Tenant Improvement Program Grant for building upgrades, commercial kitchens and ADA projects. The city has an enterprise business zone. The city is, has an enterprise business zone that offers reduced property taxes on new construction and equipment. The city has an e-commerce zone that reduces state taxes on capital asset investments used in e-commerce. All in all, I think the city has invested considerable time, staff and money into helping our local businesses.
Thank you, Christine.
Thanks.
Don?
So when in terms of, uh, let's start with the first one, business-friendly, what is friendly? When I think of friendly, I think of engaging or communicative, outgoing, listening. Um, you know, this is how we describe friendly, business-friendly or even business-friendly. But here's what friendly is not, and just think about it in terms of your own relationship. It's not a handout at the expense of someone else. It's not favorites with winners and losers. It's not deceitful and underhanded. Friendly is this thing that we should be striving to in our business-friendly thing. I, uh, at the current council, the way it's made up right now, I think I'm the only one who actually has owned a business before. Uh, started up Smokey Hearth Pizza back in two thousand and four. And, uh, I will say, if I'd have done really great at that, I probably wouldn't be here, but ran it for four years. But I learned some things in terms of working with the city. Um, I tried to partner with them, we got a lot of good information. Uh, felt like I had my business case good, opening a restaurant with a limited amount of money, it's really tough. Went in to get my permit and got hit with, I think, a fifteen thousand dollar extra charge that I didn't know about. In all of our conversations, it had never come up. It almost, almost stopped my restaurant right there on that day one. One of the things we have to do is create that transparency, create that even playing field, so that businesses who want to come here, it's easier to come here. They understand the rules, they can figure out what they want to do. As far as promoting economic development, you've got to give people a reason to come here. And that's where things like Winterfest and our parks and our environment and the quality of life here, that's what makes people want to come here, and if they stay here, they'll spend money here and businesses will thrive, and that's my story.
Thank you, Don. Shauna?
My understanding of the role of the city council is promoting economic development and creating policies to attract new businesses and support existing ones, to gain investments in infrastructure to create an environment for businesses to thrive, and to encourage public engagement to understand the needs and priorities and ensure the development initiatives align with the residents' interests. We need to allocate funds for economic development initiatives for infrastructure improvements, training programs and community revitalization projects. From what I am seeing, Sandy is spending more than our taxpayers can afford on special interest projects. We need to upgrade and maintain what we currently have without overspending and then forcing taxpayers to foot the bill. We need to promote local events that attract tourism, and I agree with Don. The Winterfest, Sandy Mountain Festival, that's all great, brings the tourists in, it's amazing, it's a lot of fun. And in turn stimulate the economy, which enhances community visibility and appeal. I feel that the current city council and its actions are not business-friendly as our SDCs may be turning businesses away from development within our city. I would love to see Sandy grow into a tourism area that will help our local businesses, economy and the residents who work here in Sandy. Thank you.
Thank you, Shauna. Kathleen?
Um, both the council and the urban renew- renewal district have a large role to play in Sandy's economic development, and I think we have a really good record because we have spent millions of dollars on, on and for our local businesses. Um, as, uh, Christina mentioned, there's been over a million dollars given to covered structures. Uh, there was almost a million given to facade and tenant improvement, uh, there, for businesses to meet Sandy, uh, style and also fix things like ADA issues. Uh, we gave the Chamber of Commerce, who does a wonderful, uh, job working with our businesses, more than ninety-six thousand dollars in the last five years to support their operations. So we also have lots of tax incentive, uh, programs and other things listed on our website. Um, but as people have said, I'll just kind of go script a little bit here, but, you know, tourism is really a thrilling thing to kind of have to come to your town, but you have to have something to draw them. And so the new park in, in Seed Park, some people are calling that, you know, a vanity project or something, but it's going to bring a lot of, of folks into town, new events, and it's just going to be really popular, I know. So I'm really excited about that. Um, the other thing I will kind of, uh, talk about is economic development about housing affordability. If we took the SDCs and cut them in half, the house, again, like Don, or Rich would say, would still sell for the same market price. We do not set the market prices. If we really want an affordable housing development in here, we have the ability to subsidize the SDCs and do some other things to get that. I don't want to come out of the gate, you know, uh, reducing our SDCs before they've even been implemented. We barely implemented them, and we're already talking about reducing it. So I have concerns about that. Let's, uh, let's worry about that, uh, if, if development starts slowing down. We can consider it then. We have decisions to make every year. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Lori?
I'm next. Um, so let's talk about economic development. Um, thriving business sector creates jobs and increases income. Uh, this is one of the roles that both the council and the mayor play. More businesses mean increased tax revenue, uh, to help pay for city, city services and infrastructure, especially commercial businesses. The last large commercial addition to Sandy was Fred Meyer, twenty-something years ago. Um, commercial and industrial businesses provide living wage jobs, something much needed here in Sandy. More jobs for our residents and higher wages, which improves everyone's quality of life. Thriving businesses also stimulate the service and retail industries, which you see quite a bit of here in town. The council and the mayor need to look at workforce growth and development, job training and apprenticeship opportunities, as well as partnerships with our local community colleges. We have wonderful parks, it's true. The city, uh, has owned and operated an internet provider. Uh, we have a state highway, we have green spaces, and we have great proximity to outdoor activities like fishing, hiking, biking and skiing that we could leverage to attract new business. As far as how the council feels, uh, toward local businesses and economic development, I think the council and the city are relatively indifferent. For instance, we've recently let go of our economic development manager, saying that we didn't need economic development because, well, we have a moratorium. I would say that's wrong. When I look around town, we have a lot of empty office space, an awful lot of empty space in town that should be filled with businesses. And, uh, so we're falling, we're falling short, uh, and we're selling short this wonderful community if you say that we don't have opportunity to grow.
Thank you. Mic's coming down to you, Richard. Look at that. Looks like the Olympic torch coming right into town. Here it is. There you go, man.
Uh, in short answer to this question, I'm going to say yes, but. Uh, we have many challenges, the challenges of the consent decree, uh, and, and the, the fees and the water. Well, those aren't unique to the residents, so those are also affecting their businesses, and I want to recognize that. With that being said, though, uh, you know, just the other night, a, a business came forward with looking for, uh, alternatives to try to figure out how to bring in a, a business that I believe it was twenty, uh, living wage jobs. And I'm all for, let's explore and figure out how to make those work. Um, and, and move that forward. Uh, within regards to the, the tourism, I think that we have made an investment. Uh, we built Base Camp Park, which is going to open on November second. Uh, and, and the hopes, I, I truly believe that's going to bring people to Sandy. Uh, I think it's going to not only just get people on the weekend, but it's a, it's a potential park that we could host Red Bull-level events there. Um, that'll have a lot of draw, not just from the area, but from the, um, from the, the region. Uh, when I worked in Lincoln City, they had a, a large skateboarding event there. And I don't, I don't know the first thing about skateboarding, but I know it brought a lot of people. And, and, and those people all come and they eat at the restaurants. And so if we're not bringing the people in, what's, I mean, I don't own the restaurant, but I'm assuming I need customers to keep my restaurant going. And the customer is going to come and they're going to leave that, things like that. Further, we branded Sandy, and I think we're doing a little good job of moving that forward and, and kind of enforcing that. I think we need to continue to appoint good people and listen to the economic board. Because to Don's point, uh, a lot of us on the, the board right now don't own businesses. But I think if we empower the right people to advise us, we can still make very good informed decisions. And then the theme for the ninth balance, and I'll just go ahead and stop there.
All right, Erin?
Hey, as a business owner, I, I feel like the council is just kind of neutral as far as being business-friendly. Um, there are some good programs to help, like the facade improvement and the covered circle programs that are great. Um, but I don't feel like there's a lot of push to help businesses, you know? Like Lori mentioned, we just, we got rid of the economic development director. We still have the advisory board, but there's still development to be done, not necessarily housing or anything new that's going to require, uh, ERU, which is an equivalent resident unit to hook up to the SECT system. But we have existing buildings that have those connections already allocated that we need to fill and really leverage that, that those are there for people because you can't go get new, you know, new planning, but there's these existing ones that we need to fill. Um, I think the Cedar Park will be great and bring a lot of people. I mountain bike, friends come from Portland to Sandy Ridge and mountain bike, but they won't stay in Sandy and, because they'll go back to Portland to a cool brewery that we don't have. And I'm not saying we don't have some good restaurant options in town, but a lot of people just, and we ski and people come through town and they just rather would go, you know, back closer to Portland where there's a lot more options. So I don't know how many, how much people are actually going to stay, other than just use the park and then go home. Um, uh, the other thing I think about the city that's been deterrent is sometimes the Sandy style, which I think looks great architecturally, has been a deterrent. There was one of the landowners that was west of practice supply. He was trying to basically give that land away for somebody to do something and couldn't get someone to do it. So to me, that says, there's something missing, there needs to be more incentives so people take advantage of those opportunities and provide more options in our town.
Thank you very much, Erin. Well, Don, you're going to be up first for question number three at bat. Okay. Number three, describe your experience working with different stakeholders in the community such as landlord owners, developers, businesses, community organizations and residents, both within city limits and outside, and how you would engage them in the council's decision-making process. Don, you're up.
Thanks. Um, first of all, uh, one of those questions is which voices matter? And, you know, to quote that phrase, all voices, all voices do matter. Um, we have a lot of stakeholders in the city, and I didn't realize how many until I got on council. Besides the normal, the residents, the voters, the property owners in the city, uh, the business owners. We've got environmental groups, uh, like the Clackamas River Basin Council, the nonprofits that we know and love, Totos Santos and, uh, Ant Farm and others. Um, we have developers, they're stakeholders. Um, sometimes, you know, it feels like it's us versus them, but there's, they are a stakeholder. And as are residents who live outside of the town but inside of the urban growth boundary. We have a formal neck. We have a formal mechanism for receiving comments on city council. So the question's phrased, you know, how do we at city council get input? So, one of the mechanisms is definitely through those come and testify. And honestly, we don't get enough people to come and talk. That's something that, it's good to see everybody here. Like I said earlier, it'd be great to see more people at a council meeting. I find that I learn from the perspectives that I hear. I may not always agree or in the side with somebody, but I almost always learn from somebody's testimony, and I try to follow up on it. Generally, if you see me in council and someone's testifying, I'm writing notes in my book because it is meaningful to me. I do want to say that I've been critical of political action committees, political action committees that may have an undue influence on local politics. I mean, I headed up a political action committee. You form them because you have a reason to, and they're for a purpose. And I think it's important to understand what the purpose is, whether it's obvious or less obvious.
Thank you, Dawn. Shauna?
My experience dealing or working with different stakeholders in our community is mostly through my volunteer actions. Sandy Mountain Festival, I'm a board member, and I am in charge of the backstage for the children's entertainment. It's a lot of fun. I bring a lot of really good entertainment to the city, and I think that it brings other people in, a lot of tourists come in for that as well. Been an assistant coach for Sandy Area Softball. I volunteered with the D-31 Foundation, and they work with numerous different areas for raising funds. Shop with a Cop program is one of them that they raise funds for. That is one that I have volunteered with for the last nine years. I've actually driven a bus, a Sam bus, picked up some children and took them over to the Sandy Community Center. They had breakfast with the police officers, and then I drove them into Clackamas when we were doing that in Clackamas. And we were singing songs, and it was a great, it was great fun. They had a lot of fun. And then when we got them back, we wrapped their presents and got them back to them with their families. I've also volunteered driving school buses when we had the COVID pandemic. The kids couldn't have birthday parties, so we had parades. And I drove some of the school buses. And with law enforcement and the firefighters, there was other law enforcement agencies involved as well, but we made it fun for the kids. We got them involved. We handed out presents and gifts to them, made them feel important so that they could see their friends or just feel special on their special day. I'm also a member of the Sandy Chamber, and I've volunteered with the Ant Farm, the Warming Shelter. Speak up.
Huge. Thank you. Kathleen?
Hi, my experience, again, I mentioned that I work with the neighborhoods, like Richard's and other folks in Sandy Bluff in my neighborhood, to get, to help them get involved in the planning and give comments to the planning commission, educate them about zoning and what the approval process is and how to make public comments that they'll actually listen to. It really did make a difference. We got Jewelberry built for Sandy Bluff, and we got Gunderson Road for Shea Lee Meadows that gave those neighbors more than just one outlet on their large neighborhood. I've also worked on parkland dedication and other development conditions that help mitigate impacts to neighbors. I've worked with local businesses and landowners to help build the Tickle Creek Trail. I was the project manager on that, and the Sandy River Park Trails, working with the Mount Hood National Forest and the Ant Farm. And I've worked with local partners in the city to get large park and trail grants. And I also served five years on the Quanis, working and still serving, working with the Christmas Basket Program, helping collect thousands of toys for the kids. It includes working with local businesses and local community organizations to help collect and distribute the toys. I want to say I've worked with the fellow Quanians at Mountain Festival, Cruisin', Winterfest, and other events, and have never met a more awesome group of dynamos, including our moderator DJ and his wife Shelley. I will say that I'm interested in working with local landowners and businesses and finding out what they need for economic development and things like that. The vacant businesses that we've had in our town, town have been there a long time, and I really want to see us, maybe we need a different skillset of staff to kind of help us work on that issue. So I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, Kathleen. Lori?
So, working with stakeholders. So having been on council for the past six years, working as a firefighter in the community for over sixteen years, being on various boards and committees with the city, as well as coaching high school sports, somebody who's had the opportunity to play for me, sitting in the back, back there. Working with our local nonprofits, I've had a unique opportunity to speak and interact with a wide variety of members in this community, from all walks of life. I've also built relationships, I've listened to questions, and I've given answers. Some of them hard, some were easy. I've watched this community support one another through government mandated shutdowns, government mandated shutdowns, and wildfires. And I would continue to engage with all of those stakeholders. One of the goals that I have, if elected mayor, would be to start holding community forums and town halls. And this would be a great opportunity, all of you guys to come out tonight, to sit and listen to us, talk about ourselves and what we would like to do for the community. I think moving forward, this can be a great opportunity for us to hear what you think and what you would like for this community. Where information can be shared and you have input, not just the three minutes that you get speaking before council all of the day.
Thank you, Lori. Here comes the football down. Hang in there, Richard. It's on its way. There you go.
All right. So, I kind of think we do have a town hall. We have it every other Monday. It's at city council, and I want to really go on the record again. I would love it if our council meetings looked like this, and people came and provided their speech and that. Beyond that, I also, online is my email address, and I've had many people reach out and get my phone number and contact me like that. I too have done the things, coached some baseball and that. But I'll be honest, that was my self-interest in getting to watch my kids play some ball. But what does come out of those relationships, I will say, is the fact that the conversations that you have with people. This being available to the community, if I can use the word the funnest, it is the funnest part of this spot. Setting up there and making decisions and arguing about SDCs, it's not really that fun. And talking about ways to water absolutely everything. But getting to go to things like Longest Bay Parkway, getting to go to the opening of the trail, the events that we get to do and interact with the community like that, that is honestly the best part, and I think that's where we get the most feedback. Further beyond that, and all these economic plans that we've been pushing out lately, each one of them has been a community engagement. You know, not only us, but the consultants also asking our community, both in and out, what do they want to see in the community? And we go back to saying that with the SDC thing for, we get my little hitch in like that. But the, that feedback is awesome. And I think as a city, we've done really good. The last thing I want to say is, since coming on council, I recognize that it was a challenge with the city communicating. And I think we, as a council, have really pushed our city staff to communicate things using Sandy Speaks, the bills, and social media a lot more than they were previously.
Thank you. Erin?
So I get to interact with a lot of community members through different things that I do. So as a property manager, I get to talk to our residents. As a construction manager, I get to talk to other developers and contractors in town. As a member of the Chamber of Commerce, I get to, and a member of the city's Economic Development Advisory Board, I get to talk to other business owners. And I'm coaching some of my kids for it, so I get to talk to all those parents. And then I'm part of the Kelso Community Club, so I get to talk to the educators at the school for my kids. So being able to just have these informal conversations with people on a daily basis, daily basis, with, you know, a variety of demographics and backgrounds, it just really helps to understand what's important to our community. So I'll continue to engage with all those people that I interact with currently and in future endeavors and help bring these perspectives and ideas to the council. I'll also try to discuss the council matters with the people that I interact with to provide feedback, so they can provide feedback and testimony to the council by encouraging them to come and speak their voice. And I just hope to be an approachable person on the council that makes people feel more comfortable in coming and talking to us and knowing that, you know, if someone like me can be involved, and, you know, I have young kids, and I'm making the commitment to try to help our community, that they can do that also.
Thank you, Erin. Christina?
In my time on the Planning Commission, I have met developers, reviewed, and commonly approved their projects. Of course, as a longtime resident, I know some of the local business owners and chat with them regularly. Some of our local businesses building covered structures came before the Planning Commission. I have been involved in community organizations and nonprofits helping serve residents both inside and out beside the city. Having raised a stunned who experiences disabilities, I have been an active member in many organizations over the years. I have spent time volunteering for UCP of Oregon and FACT of Oregon in the past year. Currently, I am an active participant in several online groups and forums that contribute and offer support to families facing challenges in the special needs community. I also spent hours as a volunteer at Kelso and Nass Elementary Schools, Boring and Cedar Ridge Elementary Schools, and Sandy High School from the years 2001 through 2017, while my now adult children were students in these schools. I've also volunteered with my youngest daughter in Girl Scouts for her Sandy-based Girl Scout group. I read the Sandy Post, and I try to stay up to date on what's going on in Sandy, and I share that with my friends and neighbors. If elected to council, I would welcome ideas and input of two city issues. As they say, none of us are as smart as all of us. I think I'm approachable, and I will let folks know they can call, email, or meet me in person to discuss anything.
Thank you very much. Okay, Shauna, you'll be up for the next question, first one up. I just want to let the audience. Thank you, Skylar Dominic. Okay. Do you think the council or the city are effectively addressing Sandy's growing pains, such as traffic issues, crime, and homelessness? What would you propose to address these issues? You get to go first, Shauna.
I know the city can do better with addressing traffic, crime, and homelessness issues. We have a unique setting, whereas Highway 26 runs right through the downtown area. We have over thirty thousand vehicles that pass through Sandy on any given day. I will advocate for more law enforcement officers to be hired, more training opportunities for them, and to ensure that they receive the equipment needed so that they can do their jobs on a daily basis. Without this support, they cannot do their jobs and be successful. Our violent crime rate in Sandy is below average for a city our size. However, quality of life crimes, such as property crimes, are above average. By adding more police officers, we can reduce the quality of life crimes with more police presence and availability. Homelessness is not a criminal issue. It is a social justice issue. I think government should get out of the business of trying to address significant issues that are impacting society. We are in a much better position than many cities surrounding the Sandy area. We should be reliant on funding allocated by the state and the county and nonprofits who specialize in serving this segment of the population. I would support a public or private partnership to reach long-term solutions and offering available services while approaching the underlying problem without spending taxpayers' dollars. There is no quick fix, and city government should be minimally involved and only to the extent necessary to help a positive solution be the outcome. I am open to all ideas in working towards the goal.
Thank you. All right, Kathleen?
I was thrilled with the hire of the new police chief, Pat Apesky. He came from OSP, and I like his emphasis on traffic enforcement. And from what I've heard, his leadership of Sandy's hard-working police force is already showing results. Answering this question, I probably would have said, you know, not as positive six months ago, but I do see a definite upward tick. We spend about eighty percent of our general fund on our wonderful but understaffed PD Police Department. They're our largest city department. They are in the hot process of replacing three officers due to departures. So they're definitely understaffed. New chief and the police department and the city manager are reviewing a new police staffing study that just was released. I will work with those folks and the council on increasing police staffing and funding with both city and outside funding sources, because that's what it will take. All this will ensure neighborhood patrols, especially after midnight, when a lot of the things happen, and a quicker response time and more traffic enforcement. I'd like us to explore changing the speed limits in residential areas, including Bluff and DeBarco, to twenty-five miles per hour, because I think that will take care of some of the speeding problems. We'll continue to work with ODOT and Highway 26 on signal timing and more pedestrian crossings. And I'm proud to say that the city manager just got county funding for a, to hire a homeless, a full-time homeless liaison. They will patrol areas, help to connect the individuals to services at Clackamas County and nonprofits, enforce camping regulations, engage police when necessary, and they'll coordinate homeless camp cleanups with groups like the Sandy Trash Force, of which I'm a member. So I believe all these actions will help. I am not in favor of us getting a bunch of money from state and all to start delivering behavior and homeless services because that is not, you know, we'll never get out of that. And we've got too much on our plate to take that on. The county is getting those funds, and the nonprofits are getting those funds.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Take those roles. Thank you.
Lori?
I was told I need to hold the microphone closer. Can you guys hear me better? All right. I'm used to my voice carrying, so. So, what the? Oh, fair enough. So I think I'll agree with Kathleen, the addition of our new police chief. I think he's definitely seen an uptake in traffic stops, so I've been very excited to see that. As far as areas where the city can work to help with things like traffic, we've been working with ODOT with the light timing, but that is a much larger conversation and can definitely be continued. We need to look at that more. If I'm being honest, I'm not a proponent of bypass, mostly because of the one billion dollar price tag that's not in the realm of possibilities. So, but things that we can look at to address traffic issues would be possibly widening roads, adding lanes, direct, having dedicated turn lanes, especially like over at Highway 211, and park and ride options that utilize our public parking and our transit system. We can look at limiting street parking in areas, especially around crosswalks. Street parking around crosswalks, in my opinion, is dangerous. We've had pedestrians get hit, and I think it's from distractions from cars being parked in the way. On the issue of crime, I'd like to see us look at neighborhood watches, especially during certain times of the year, summers and holidays. I think the general public awareness and education program are critical in preventing crime, tips and tricks that make personal belongings less attractive to criminals. That's my thirty-second warning. And we should look at holding public safety classes at the community center. And we should look at holding public safety classes at the community center. Homelessness, I could talk on at length and definitely can't talk about it in two minutes. I just gave a recent one-hour talk to the chamber. It might be online, but I will say the biggest area of homeless that I'm worried about are our 25 youth that are homeless. And I think the Ant Farm Youth Hub is doing a good job of getting in touch with those guys.
Excellent. Thank you, Lori. Richard?
This is one of my favorite issues to chat about, which is pretty easy. What's unique about Sandy traffic with that is, you know, it's not just our growth that's causing it. Everyone that goes to Eastern Oregon, to the mountains, every time Portland grows, most people want to go use the services outside of, for our community. So we do need to continue to work with ODOT. We do need our police department to continue to produce traffic enforcement. But I think we can also work more collaboratively with other law enforcement outside of the city and start leveraging that. Further, there is grant funding available to do traffic enforcement, and I think that's, we would have to kick in some, what would I always call match funds, but I do think it's doable and I am going to push that way for that. On regards to the homelessness, and like Lori said, I could probably talk to that ad nauseam, but what I will say is compassion and tolerance, so much of the time, we think that it's true and hurting a lot, and they're not. We can be very compassionate, but we don't have to be tolerant of bad behavior. And that's what I ask our police department to do. And so with that being said, I think it's important that the people that do come through our community, as well as our residents, not only are safe, which Sandy is a safe community, as Shauna said, it's a low violent crime rate, but also feel safe. And when we see people acting in ways that aren't, that don't make them feel safe, we need to address that. I think the city, working with the county, get that grant funding to hire a homeless, thank you, to hire a homeless liaison is absolutely a perfect step in the right way. We'll continue to have a homeless task force and we'll continue to work together collaboratively with organizations like Ant Farm, with the county and that. But I also will agree that we do not need to, we have a very small point in time count, 12 people, and then the homeless youth, and I think we need to work with those organizations to do that.
Thank you, Richard. Erin?
I think our city is doing a pretty good job with these issues. As far as traffic, I know we've had some recent incidences, but major traffic accidents are pretty rare inside the cities. Congestion is an ever-growing, you know, problem, and I hope that if I'm on council, we can explore some options to reduce this. I rarely see an accumulation of trash that sometimes comes with homelessness. I was walking, I forget what town we were in, but I was walking with my fifth-year-old and he says, "Mom, why is our city so clean?" And I just laughed and I said, "Well, because we have really great staff and police that are keeping it that way. They're doing a great job keeping our community clean and safe and crime's very low." I appreciate that the city of Sandy, they encourage block parties this year for the National Night Out, and one of my neighbors and I organized a party for our neighborhood, and it was just a really great opportunity to get to know more of our neighbors. And the idea of this is that you're promoting public safety through these neighborhood connections so that everyone knows everybody and they're walking out for each other. It was great to get to know my neighbors. We created a contact list, so if people need anything or have any issues. And the fire department and the police showed up, and so it's great to get to know our local, you know, first responders also. So I would like to see us promote that a little more, because I think only three block parties were registered this year, so it'd be nice to see that program grow. And, you know, I don't want to diminish the issues. We do have traffic, crime, and homelessness, but they're going to be present, but I think we're doing a pretty good job at preventing them and combating them, and I will just make sure that we're supporting the police programs and other services to make sure that we're effectively addressing them.
Thank you, Erin. Christina?
I think most of the biggest traffic issues are in Highway 26, could be solved with a bypass. The estimated cost of that bypass, as Lori mentioned, is $1 billion, so Sandy cannot solve that on our own. I think working with ODOT is important, even if it helps those busy times a little. There are also numerous complaints about speeding on our local roads that I think Sandy can help address by reducing speed limits, installing speed bumps, updating pedestrian crossings, and other things that can be done to improve road safety. The Sandy Police Department changed their staffing schedules to ensure more than one officer is on duty at all times. That really helps with neighborhood patrols after midnight, when much of the prowling, break-ins, and vandalism seem to be happening. The city has developed regulations for camping in the city and police often are able to enforce those. If elected, I would support increased police funding for more traffic enforcement, neighborhood patrols, and addressing the homeless issues, the homeless that are violating our camping and other regulations. I have heard some updates need to be made to those regulations, as we have found some loopholes that could be closed.
Thank you, Christina. Don?
Thanks. I like going last, because for the most part, I agree with most of the statements that have been made. The city has done some improvements, but I'll mention a couple of things around traffic. One of the things that, it's a little thing, but one of the things I pushed for on council and we got was the little radar light, flashing light trailer that we have now that you can request and have put in your community. And it records a log of all the cars that have gone through, coming and going and out fast, and it gives us a data point so that we can apply either additional patrols or for other speed restricting mechanisms, like the speed bumps and things. So it's data. I've asked for two more, and we're, the study is underway to have permanent mounted ones as you come into the oneways into Sandy, because a lot of people just come blowing through that 25 mile, and that's contributed to that danger when you're crossing from the Shell Station over to Sand Landia, people come flying through there. So we have some issues there. And just a reminder to all of us, I mean, since COVID, our driving habits have really gone downhill and we're running red lights right and left, so we're going to hurt somebody, so slow down, let's find some compliance. The city's been very proactive on the homeless front, in terms of getting our code so that the officers and this new liaison, they have the tools to move people on or to address things. A lot of cities are way behind, so this is an area that we're actually ahead on. And last thing, a lot of people talking about police or increased police staffing. Keep in mind, anything that starts with the word increase is going to cost from somewhere. One of the things I've been advocating for from our police chiefs for the last few times is total lifecycle cost into our budgets.
Thank you, Don. Thank you very much. Okay, pass that mic down to Kathleen, she'll get the first question, the last question here. Question number five. Then we'll take a break. What steps do you currently take or propose to take to ensure transparency and accountability in the city council decisions?
Well, I've been on Facebook and started Sandy Residents for Responsible Growth 10 years ago, and that was a way to really, you know, let folks know about what was going on in cities. But it also probably came with somewhat of my own personal opinion on a few things. Pride not to keep that, but I'm proud to say that the city actually stepped up to the plate and took over some of those responsibilities, because it really was their duty to do that, to get the word out about city actions and opportunities. Now our meetings, our meeting notes, our videos of the meetings, activities, rec events, all those things are all on both Facebook and the website. So I will routinely answer or comment on Facebook to explain council issues, but mostly just link to our website so that they have the actual information to address their issues. One of my personal goals that I didn't really get to on the first part was just the, to ensure my words and actions represent my belief that all voices matter. I want to hear from everyone. I've been saying this for a long time. I want to hear folks, everyone, both in and outside the city limit. Folks can call, text, Facebook PM me, meet me for coffee or beer, flag me in the grocery store. The other thing I want to try to do is help the community better understand what the city manages outside city limits for the Plaquemines County, ODOT, and School District, because we do a lot. And you're right, you know, all those folks that live outside city limits have a lot of services that are being provided by the city, and we need to hear your voice about those services. They cover police, libraries, bus service, Sandy Net, senior services, parks, trails, and recreation, but there are some things that are not covered and are not paid for by folks outside the city. And so that's important for you all to understand too, because if we're outside the city providing those services, we're not inside the city doing that. So that's important. And we just need to work together on these services and help folks to understand it. So I'm looking forward to working on those goals and making sure that folks that want it, everyone, hey, is it, oh, I'm sorry.
Goes fast, doesn't it? I'm not going to throw things, okay? All right, Lori.
Okay. This one will be a fairly short answer for me, because at the very beginning, we had the three goals that were asked in the first question, and this was my third goal, so this is my opportunity to talk about it. So as I mentioned earlier, as far as transparency and accountability, one of the goals that I have would be to start community forums and town halls. I think these types of public engagement are paramount in having an open dialogue with the community and making sure that everybody's voice is heard, everyone, whether you're a business owner, you're outside the community or inside. This also makes sure that decision-makers, the people that you've elected to make those decisions, are fully aware of how you feel about things. I think we tend to rely on social media far too much, and I think a lot of people aren't on social media, and a lot of people don't use that as a forum to voice their opinion. The public should also be part of the decision-making process, especially on key issues. And so in that, one of the other things that I would like to do is create a finance committee that operates separately from the budget committee. This would ensure funds are allocated appropriately to various services and also provides financial oversight in how your tax dollars are being spent. This group could also look at opportunities where the city is missing out on, like technical revenue down the road.
Thank you, Lori. Richard, you're up.
All right. I think one of the things that we do is, when it comes to, I'm going to address with the accountability thing. I'm fortunate in this election, not to be running against anybody, but in the last one, when I did, I never took any money from anybody, even though it was my office. That doesn't mean I don't want to listen. It just means I don't want to have to have ties monetary or any other thing, even special interests, whatever those may be. I believe that's a form of accountability. My, the decisions that I make come from the conversation that I have, the input that we receive from community members, from consultants, from everyone that's involved in the entire process and stuff to begin with. Further, I hope it kind of comes through tonight. I'm not the best of a politician. I kind of just throw it out there as it is and hope that it, I'll see if it comes through. I believe that when we're in a city council meeting, I try to say everything that I think is important, get it on the record, so that it can come back and be seen, and again, hold me accountable. Again, I'm always willing to take phone calls, I'm always willing to meet, and I think every opportunity I've been presented, for me, it's, again, the funnest part of the job. But I think the transparency piece, I think that we do everything in the open with the exception of very few things, and when it comes down to things like budgetary processes and stuff, that's all in the wide open for everybody to see. I don't think more bureaucracy is needed to solve the problem. I'm just hoping for more, indeed. Again, I'm really hoping for that engagement as we move forward for community input to help us get state and federal money to help allow the problem to be played through.
Thank you, Richard. Erin?
So first, I want to address something that Rich mentioned about money, because most of you are following this closely, so you probably know that I'm part of the People for Sandy PAC, and there's some misinformation that we're taking very large donations for special interests, and that is simply not the case. So all of our campaign finance activity is online, anybody's is. And I just have to say for me personally, I don't think that I could have navigated this campaign without this group behind me helping me, because there's so many rules that go into it. Every time you purchase something, anytime someone makes a donation, it has to be reported, and I don't think I would have had the capacity to be able to run for this position without that support. So, and anyone can see, it's all just been friends and family, it's not special interest or anything like that. But as far as on the council, I would like to make sure that the council is providing easily digestible, readily accessible information for our residents to access, to understand the role and decisions of the council, because I've had a hard time. One of the ideas is, you know, publishing a comprehensive list of voting records, because I've been through this process, been trying to look through all those things, and you have to go through every single meeting minute and every single thing to see what the vote was at every meeting for, and it's a little cumbersome, it would be nice to see, this is what they voted, this is what they voted, and it's all laid out right there. Another idea is just to create some easy-to-read charts, graphs, and infographics that summarize some of the major decisions that are made. I know a lot of people aren't going to go to the meetings, they aren't going to go back and read those meeting minutes, so providing something very quick and simple to say, this is what was decided, this is how it affects you as a resident, and that, so now you know, and it's transparent.
Thank you. Christina?
I think that city council has improved greatly in getting information about city meetings, events, and opportunities to our community, both on their website and on Facebook. Being on our Planning Commission, I was surprised at how much authority they have when it comes to making decisions about developments. The council only gets involved with those decisions if there is an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision. Developments being built in Sandy probably have the biggest impact to our residents. The city has improved their postings and developments on their website, but I think more can be done, both getting the word out to neighbors and giving the council a heads-up, of what developments are in the plan review stage, as that is where some of the impact mitigation is discussed and tentative agreements made between developers and planning staff. Attendance and participation to council and Planning Commission's meetings is something I regularly encourage. It is such an eye-opening experience to be present for those important gatherings where public input is welcomed and encouraged. I'd also like to say that residents outside the city limits always have a voice. Those inside the city limits have a voice and a vote, but we're always listening to everybody's input, because it does impact all of us as a community.
Thank you, Christina. Don?
Thanks. Couple of things on this transparency. It's actually one of the tenants that I ran on four years ago was transparency, and it's one of the things I've been focused on in council. I've worked closely with Jeff Brody to improve our website, provide access, frequently I'm one finding broken links and things like that to improve it, so that people can find things and to have information available to you. I want to say something about infographics, because I love infographics and I love those ideas. I would come up with them all the time, but as being on council, what I've learned is they take a lot of time and money to produce. And right now, our staff, I can't get enough of those things out of them. So it means more staff, so that's an increase that would cost more. I want to, as far as transparency too, I think transparency starts with honesty. I mean, you can be transparent or claim, but if you're not honest, you're not transparent, right? And it means taking some hard decisions sometimes and saying things that are incredibly unpopular. I've been accused of being a politician. I am absolutely not, because I do, if you look at that voting record, you'll see that, yeah, I'm pretty consistent in what I voted for, and it's not necessarily the political thing to have done. I'm not afraid of the repercussions. I stood and I defended the process for hiring a police chief, and we've heard several times that we got a good result out of that. Transparency means sometimes doing the hard thing. Ultimately, though, it's up to the voters, and it is up to you to decide, are we really being honest? Are we doing the right thing? I do my best to provide that transparency and welcome questions and thoughts.
Thank you, Don. Shauna?
Some ideas that I have for ensuring transparency and accountability... Oops, that's not me right.
Time goes fast.
Time flies. Are we ready? I'll start again.
Go ahead.
Okay. Some ideas that I have for ensuring transparency and accountability in city council decisions are...
Okay. Some ideas that I have for ensuring transparency and accountability in city council decisions are increasing the ethics training for council members to reinforce the importance of transparency and responsibility in decision-making. Add conflict of interest policies to enforce strict guidelines. This would ensure council members disclose any potential conflicts and recuse themselves from decisions they need to be removed from. Performance metrics to evaluate the impact of council decisions on the community, and to make this data accessible to the public. Council members need to report regularly on their activities and decisions to include how they align with the community and their priorities. The city council has a responsibility to be accountable to all voters, not just those who align with council members' ideas, with them on Facebook, or those who are well-known in our community. Every voice matters. I have personally spoken at council meetings, and I did not feel like I was heard. My voice was not heard. And that is another reason why I'm here today.
All right, thank you. We're gonna take, right now, a five-minute break. We've only got less than half an hour left, so my guess is we're gonna get one more question in and closing statements before we're done. Also, I'm gonna ask the candidates if they would like to, and I can, we can do this before closing statements, give out their contact information to the audience, before, so the audience, if they have further questions that we couldn't get to, they can ask you individually. All right, thank you. Take a break. I'm gonna try and find a cookie. Ready? You can see through the window, can you? Yeah, okay. Okay, candidates, in order to cover two questions, we're gonna give you one minute. Okay, so it's gonna be brief. You've never heard these questions before, nor have I. And if you wanna pass, pass. Okay, I'll give you that option. If you say pass, pass. And who's your favorite color? Stop. I have to ask my wife. Lori, you would be up first. You ready? Okay, the question is, and it has, I'm just gonna go off the card. It says SDCs, and it's circled. Define fair share, and what is the industry standard, or what cities are you comparing Sandy to?
So Sandy should be being compared to like, like-sized cities with a similar population and a similar growth model. So your SDCs or your system development charges, obviously, they're a, they're a one-time fee that's paid by developers. The one thing that I think gets confusing for people is that they can only be used for new capacity, so that's new infrastructure only. They cannot be used to pay for employees. They can't be used to fund maintenance. They can't be used for existing anything. Marty, the thirty second? What was the second half of that question? Quick?
And...
Fair share? What is fair share?
Yeah, we are.
Yeah.
Well, what's it, yeah. What is the industry standard and what cities are you comparing?
Yep, so the industry, the, the fair share would be that the new development, so the new house, apartment complex, whatever it may be, pays their fair share of the hookup fees or the connection fees, and the infrastructure, their infrastructure piece, right? So, and that varies from basically wastewater to water to parks and whatnot throughout. So that's kind of the short answer. It's a really convoluted, very hard topic.
Tough question to answer in one minute, no question. But we're trying to get a little information out there. Okay, Richard, you're coming up. Hold it. Do, 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 do. There we go.
Perfect. SDC, system development charges. Lori answered it to a degree, and I mostly agree with that statement. With that being said, I'm gonna highlight a little bit of something. It's the strain that the additional growth puts under the system. So currently, our wastewater system, as I stated before, we can limp it along. We're fine. But as we grow new houses, we're gonna have new toilets flushing, new water turning on, and all of that has to be dealt with somewhere. It's that strain. That's what we are, that's the strength, that's the challenge that we are up against. What does that fair share look like? You know, we, what we do is we end up having to consult with people that are, that understand and know the cost of this, and then it's spread out amongst all that new development. So that fair share looks at exactly what does a single-family resident place onto the system and what is the fair share there? And so that goes to, it's important to note, it's not just water and wastewater. It's the road. There's more cars on the road now. It is our parking trails, because as we grow, we're gonna want new, this money can also be used to pay for baseball fields. It can be used for soccer fields, sports complexes that our children can use as they grow.
Thank you. Erin, you're up.
So to me, fair share is ensuring that we're covering the costs for our infrastructure systems, but not overburdening the developers and the people who end up buying or renting the houses. Compared to other cities, I'm, I'm a numbers person. I studied engineering, and I totally love spreadsheets and graphs and stuff like that. So I actually looked at a lot of other cities' SDCs, and in comparison to other cities that are similar in size, we're, our package is close. We're at thirty-two thousand right now for a single-family residence, and that's close to cities similar in size. But the difference was, is our parks was thirty-five percent of that package instead of, you know, being, you know, if all were equal, it'd be twenty-five each. And so there needs to kind of balance out, like, okay, parks shouldn't be this large portion of this total SDC package, because water, wastewater, and transportation is just as important.
Thank you. Very good.
This is not my realm of expertise, but from what I understand and what I've been looking into, SDCs, to me, a fair share would be dispersed evenly, not one-sided one way or the other. It should not be passed on as a strain to homeowners. We should not bear the brunt of these costs, because Sandy is in a unique situation with the moratorium. I think with the halt of building, it's created this bubble of what are appropriate SDCs. And currently, it's being passed on to you and I, homeowners. And so we need to find a balance. Balance is a big word tonight. We need to find a balance where we can support responsible growth, but we also support our existing homeowners who should not pay an exorbitant amount to have those new homes in our neighborhood.
Thank you. Dawn?
Thanks. This is near and dear to me, and I encourage you to go to my website and read up on this, because there's been some misinformation already stated tonight. First of all, Lori was almost right. There are two components to an SDC charge, and it's calculated to pay for excess capacity that already exists in the infrastructure. So if you overbuild something, your road has extra capacity, your sewer capacity, your, that can be factored into your SDC charge. So somebody who builds and wants to take advantage of that existing capacity, that's factored in. Second thing, the industry standard, it's not an industry standard. It's a state-mandated standard, and there's laws and ordinance around it and a specific formula. The formulas are you start with your facility plans. What do you need to build for the future? And based on those population studies, and then based on what that builds and those estimates, it's just math. It just rolls out. And so if you short the SDCs, you decide to right-size them, looking at your neighbors because you don't match your neighbors. Well, we've been in incredible inflationary times the last few years. You have to look at when those were updated to even know if they're applicable.
Thank you, Dawn. Shawna?
Well, I, like Christina, do not know a ton about the SDC, but I will do my best. From what I understand about SDCs, fair share should be something that's kind of equal across the board for what you're paying for with their hookups. From what I understand, with the parks here, thirty-seven point six percent of the SDC that the developer is paying goes to parks, and only thirteen point three percent of that goes to wastewater management. I think that the money needs to be allocated differently.
All right, thank you. Kathleen?
Okay, first of all, that, the sewer SDCs haven't been updated, and they're gonna get higher. So SDCs, as they said, it's, you have a master plan, and it, you have all these projects, and then the black box happens, and reimbursement is accounted for, but also, you know, excess capacity, but also the, you know, the, the growth part of it is, all gets factored in there to determine the SDCs. But we cannot always compare with other cities. Other cities like Gladstone are similar in population, but Gladstone is pretty much developed out. They don't have anywhere to grow to. Other places may have all their roads in place already, so their road SDCs may not be like ours. So you really do have to kind of look at apples and apples when you're comparing SDCs for similar places. We can adjust these SDCs as needed, and we will need to. We annually approve these SDCs. If, you know, we, we need to, we're still waiting on the water and the wastewater SDC. When we get those, we may adjust other SDCs to get, to get, you know, more balance. But I don't wanna go out of the gate reducing park stuff, because we still have park stuff, you know, Deer Point hasn't had a park in ten years. We need to get them a park. So if developing slows, we can decrease.
Thank you. All right. Richard, guess what? You're gonna get the final question. You're gonna love this one. Oh, wait a minute, I dropped my gummy. Gummy, let me get that picked up. You'll understand that comment in just a moment. Question is, what is the reason Sandy restricts sale and growing of cannabis and hemp? The city misses out on tax revenues.
Very simple. It went to the vote, and voters, the community turned it down. It really is just that simple. I think we hear, we heard a lot tonight about wanting community input, and in regards to that, that's exactly the meaning of providing this input on the study we want.
Thank you. Erin?
I think for me personally, and probably why it got voted down, is that the residents just don't want it to be easily accessible to our youth. And yes, it's legal, but, and yes, kids know about it, but if they just, if they can't get it in walking distance, then maybe it helps prevent some of the usage of it in our youth.
Thank you. Christina?
I agree with Rich. It was voted down. I, as to Erin's point, I believe the legal use for marijuana in our state is twenty-one. Is that correct? Okay, just for my own clarification and understanding. You know, Gresham's not that far away. I think Sandy prides itself on being separate from Gresham. I don't think, at least in my mind, Gresham is great for Gresham. Sandy's great for Sandy, and there are reasons that Sandy is set apart from Gresham in Portland, and I think perhaps maybe that's one of them.
Thank you, Shawna. Dawn?
Yeah, I don't think I have anything to add that's already been said, other than, you know, that was done a long time ago, and perhaps citizens would feel different now. I don't know.
Right, and Shawna?
Well, I have to agree with most everybody up here. Can you hear me?
Yep, there we go.
And I really, like Dawn, I don't really have anything more to add. Yes, the marijuana age is the famous drinking age, and I think the cigarette age as well is twenty-one now, but I don't really have anything more to add.
Very good. There we go. Kathleen?
First of all, I think the tax benefit has been a little bit overestimated, and maybe that was, you know, because there's so many providers now, and so I don't think it's profitable as it maybe was. But that aside, the community didn't want it, and lots of other places offer it. Gresham is not, you know, there's places on the east side of Gresham and up in Welch's, so you don't have to go that far, not like a desert around here. So, and also, there was somebody asking me about growing it, and I'm like, well, you know, we're in neighborhoods. Can you imagine somebody growing, you know, this stuff next door to you and the skunk smell all the time? That wouldn't really be a good, a good idea. So I, I don't have any problem kind of taking a hard path on that. Like I said, people can find it if they want it.
Thank you. Lori, you're...
I'm gonna hear the same thong and dance. Yeah, so I'm gonna say it was twenty seventeen, maybe twenty fifteen, but that was remitted basically to the voters from council, and the public didn't want, didn't want marijuana sold inside the city limit, so there it is. If people, if somebody wanted to take the initiative to change that, you'd have to go through a process and getting that put back on the ballot, so that's kind of where it sits. Sorry to, same, same thong, different, Rich?
Very good. It's a tough one. The law's the law, and if that was the voter's will. Well, I, roll another one, just like the other one. All right, there we go. Wasn't me. Pass the mic down to Erin here. We're gonna go for closing statements. Due to time constraints, we're gonna go to one-minute closing statements. All right. I know, I'm sorry, but we are well gonna go past our time. Is that okay with everybody? Yeah, let's see. Who starts out first? You had the last one, Richard. So Erin, I think, starts first. Now, before we go there, I wanna add, after your closing statement, if you would like to tell the audience and the people online how to contact you, if they should choose to with further questions, you may do so. And I will not, that will not, you get your minute, and then you get that time to give that contact info. Erin, you go first. Thank you.
Okay, well, I believe some of my varied experiences would be a good asset to the council. I understand a municipal code, because I've worked in construction management and managed residential and commercial properties. I understand budgeting and accounting with my experience as a bookkeeper and business owner. I'm connected to the community, and will bring a broader, broader perspective and a wider range of voices from community members to the council. What I really love most about Sandy is our proximity to all the outdoor recreational activities, such as hiking, rafting, biking, which my family and I enjoy doing, and it's so awesome to have all this nature in our backyard. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I've learned so much through this process, and have met some really, really great people and got to know some other people even better. And I hope that I get to serve the community as a council member. I can be reached at my email is arynferg@gmail, it's spelled A-R-Y-N-F-E-R-G at gmail dot com.
Thank you, Erin.
Okay, I'm gonna talk really fast, because I thought I had two minutes. Here we go. As we conclude tonight, I am confident I will be the best choice for city council. I have experience in official proceeding codes, and I know what to expect from content and structure with my regular attendance to meetings over the last two years. I have previously mentioned that I am a parent of an adult son who navigates the world living with autism. In this very important role, I have learned to be an advocate in ways that are effective and successful. In those twenty-three years, I have found a voice and strong leadership presence that has supplied me with many skills to effectively communicate and explore ideas and processes that are complex, in the goal of finding common ground, mutual understanding, and ultimately, solutions for challenges presented. A vote for me ensures Sandy residents are represented without bias, and your best interests and those of the community will always be my priority. Sandy is my home, and I will continue to provide a voice in strong and thoughtful, responsible leadership as we continue to grow. My favorite things in Sandy are the folks walking by and saying hello and...
And you have contact info you want?
Yes. If you wanna email me, my email is kristina.ramfeyer@gmail.com.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you, everybody.
Dawn?
Thanks. Boy, I love everything about Sandy. Moved here twenty-six years ago. I am uniquely qualified to continue shepherding our city's most challenging projects, including our wastewater and freshwater system upgrades mandated by federal and state regulators. My professional career with extensive experience in utilities and large capital projects allows me to understand, assess, and counsel the project team, develop optimal plans for a sustainable future, which is what we need right now. I refuse all political funding, so I am not beholden to anyone. I think I've spent forty or fifty dollars on my campaign so far. I'm not afraid or moti, I'm not motivated by political ideologies. Hey, the only certain thing is that change is going to happen. What we think is the crisis today won't be the crisis two years from now. I thought I ran to rebuild the pool. That's what I wanted to do. I discovered well over a hundred million dollars worth of infrastructure projects that made that a non-starter. So we had to focus here. You want somebody sitting there that can deal with what we don't know about.
Dawn, do you wanna mention how they could reach you?
Thanks. DawnforSandy.com, please.
All right, thank you. Shawna?
Some experience and skills I would bring to Position Six when I am elected are the ability to make decisions without any bias or agenda. Because of my experience as a police officer, I never allow my own personal feelings or biases to cloud my judgment when it comes to the public. My opinions shouldn't matter when I'm taking the community's desires into account. I wanna see Sandy get back to the basics, stop the special interest and agenda items being pushed by others up for reelection and invest in more staffing in our existing departments to allow for better service to our community. I will listen to our city residents and support them while building public and private partnerships to accomplish our collective goals. I will focus on ensuring professionalism and respect returned to local government. Despite what others have said about me, I have no agenda. I will not act based on what I want, but what our community wants. If I don't agree with what is being said, that doesn't matter, because that's my own personal opinion, and it should keep to myself. I will always take... I will always take into consideration the circumstances of any situation and do what is fair.
Thank you. You want to give info?
S-S, like Shawna Shawna, S-S-Lundry, L-U-N-D-R-Y at gmail dot com.
Kathleen, thank you, Shawna.
Hi, I, I'd like to be your next mayor because I have a strong work ethic. Being retired, I have the time that it's going to take to really get some of these changes and, uh, funding and, and other issues dealt with. Um, I've got decades of experience with city departments, uh, project management skills, public involvement, marketing, construction management, and most of all, a passion for improving Sandy. Um, I have a knowledge of the master plans that are on the books for our roads, water, parks and everything else, which is critical because that determines the SDCs. I have a knowledge of the budget. I have my own spreadsheet because I kind of make up, try to track where, where the funding ha- has been and what the trade-offs are. If we, if we fund it more, what, what, where it will come out of. Um, I have a huge knowledge of planning codes, development processes and things like that. Um, I have a, an awareness of some of the pressures that we do get from developers, um, to reduce the, the fund. So I understand that and I, I really do. Um, I'd like to keep the, thank the chamber again for hosting and I really appreciate it. I love everything about Sandy, um, most of all, people.
Kathleen, you want to give info on how to contact?
Kaywalker at CI dot Sandy dot O R dot U S.
All right. Thank you. And Lori?
All right. Well, if you know me, you know I'm not afraid to ask hard questions. You also know I'm not afraid to be a voice, um, if I don't agree with something or I think something's being done, uh, that's unethical or incorrect. I'm driven by the best interest of this community and I think you've heard tonight that I have a clear, long-term vision for the city. I'm a professional problem solver. That's what I do for a living. I'm not afraid to crawl in the trenches to get things done. I love this community and one of my favorite things about Sandy is how willing, bleh, how willing the people are to step up and help each other. That's what community is. I've run this campaign with, with integrity and transparency and I hope I've earned your vote. And you can reach me at Smallwood, my last name, seven one three at gmail dot com.
Thank you, Lori. And Richard, you get to be the last voice. You were the first and the last. I don't know how special you are, bud.
Ha, I, I think you should ask my wife that. She'd probably tell you that. Uh, with all seriousness, what skills and, uh, what strengths and skills would I bring? Uh, you know, I've, I've been on this position for four years and just like Dawn, I didn't come onto this fully knowing what I was giving myself into. Over the last four years, I feel like I've really gained a lot of experience, um, in understanding exactly how the city governs itself and the challenges that we have ahead of us. Uh, with that being said, you've heard a lot about the challenges tonight. Um, I kind of tried to make it my point. But with that being said, a challenge is also an opportunity. What we have right now is very unique. We actually have a pause, a time to kind of regroup and reorganize and figure out a path forward. I think right now there's, uh, a few of us up here that I would agree with, that we have a path forward. Um, while there's still challenges ahead of that and issues that we need to address, I think that we are on a direction and I'm going to hope that, the other skill that I bring is that I can get all of your support to again, challenge your elected officials at the state government to leverage some money. I love Sandy. What I, what I love the most, unfortunately, we haven't got the last few years and one of the reasons I moved here is, no.
Richard, can you tell them how they can reach you? Besides on the, on, on the mountain?
Is, uh, rsheldon@CI dot Sandy dot O R dot U S, or if you just go to the city webpage, go to the city council, um, I'd have to call there as well. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. I was just past a note and it's my understanding, according to this note, is there a council workshop meeting Monday at six o'clock, City Hall, regarding the interview, you're interviewing applicants for Carl Exner's vacancy. And my, and if those of you don't know, Carl, uh, had, I think, two more years left on his term and decided for family reasons or whatever to, to let go. And it's a huge time commitment, I might add. These people spend, it's not just the meetings, the homework, the investigation, the what they go through, and I've served on several boards. I don't think any board works harder or any council works harder than what, what I see. And I watch those city meetings and I know what it takes to put into that. There's a lot. So if you're interested in that, uh, I would show up at City Hall at six o'clock, uh, on that because that will be a appointed seat, I believe, for the next two years and then it'll come up for election at that time. Okay, same as Robert. Okay, great. I would love to thank the audience for being fantastic. You were quiet. You did great. No one fell asleep. You were attentive. And Dawn, to answer your question, there was anywhere from twenty to thirty people at a time online watching this. And I believe, tell me if I'm wrong, Dawn, this will be packaged up and ware so they can watch it later. YouTube and Facebook on the chamber site? Okay. Very good. And I have to, to finish this, yeah, you're all celebrities now. That's all I can say. To finish this, I think Sandy is very blessed to have the quality of candidates that we have sitting in front of you right now, because I can tell you in a lot of towns, that doesn't happen. So give them a big hand. Thank you. Thanks again for the chamber for putting this on and everybody, make sure you vote November fifth. Here we go. Make your decisions. Thank you very much.